Whenever you're.
So, good evening and welcome everybody to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Special Meeting for Monday, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty five. I will call this meeting to order and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is one nation, united. And this is all liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Let's just reflecting back during the pandemic when I led the the flag salute during early part of the pandemic and. I forgot the words. Pretty embarrassing, actually, but. Hasn't happened since then, folks. So we have. Several things on our agenda tonight. Do I hear a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for adoption of the agenda. Any further discussion? Are none of those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. It passes unanimously. Thank you, council. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to talk about the procedures and policies, RCWs, as well as local policies here for your governance manual. For this election. Of the caretaker position to to. For lack of a better word. For Deputy Mayor Bodie after her passing. I know it's a difficult thing for everybody to consider, but we have the job of. We have a job to do here and we represent the community to make sure that things continue apace. So with that. We're going to begin with authorizing the mayor to direct the administration to begin the processes needed to fill fill the vacant vacant council position per the city's governance manual. I'd entertain a motion.
Point of order.
Yeah.
Are we going to have the presentation first before we do that?
What was your thinking Administrator Hill and Attorney Pratt? I was thinking we'd be open for questions. Did you want to go through the specifics?
I could answer any questions anyone has. I sent out some material earlier. Late for last week. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or a simple refresher. I could talk about, I think the executive session is a little difficult to see how that might work and I've seen some work and I could talk about that if you'd like.
Colleagues, what's your pleasure? I mean, thi- this is your time, so however we can assist, happy to do. Have some relief.
Thank you. I appreciate the materials that you sent out. They were actually very clear. With that, though, clarity comes with repetition and I would be open to a just sort of brief summation of the process. And that that might be an opportunity for questions.
Thank you, council member. Colleagues, other requests or comments or questions? Well, why don't we start with, Kim, could you just give us a brief overview of the RCWs? And then we'll take a pause for questions on that and then we'll move on to the governance manual, which is hyperlocal. If you will, colleagues.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Pratt. You have the floor.
So as a mayor council form of government, the RCWs give the city council the authority to fill a council vacancy. And you have ninety days to do that. If you're not able to do that in ninety days, then the King County Council will do it for you. And if they don't do it, then I believe it's the governor's office. So there is a succession here, but I have no doubt you'll be able to do this within ninety days. The person who you appoint fills that vacancy until someone can be elected. And it's a little unusual that they only fill the vacancy until that person is certified in November. So you get an elected person in there right away. You don't wait until January when everybody else gets sworn in. Let's see. So the person who fills Councilmember Bodie's position will serve until what the end of her term is. So I believe that's December of two thousand and twenty seven. So they will serve that remainder of that term and it will it should show that on the ballot and. Having looked, I understand there's that's there, that was there for people to run under and that there are people running for that position. Let's see.
So, Kim, just just for clarity, because this question has come up, even came up yesterday at the farmer's market. There is the the position right now, which again euphemistically we're calling the caretaker position from now. From when the decision is made by you folks until the election is certified. And from that period, from once the election is certified, then there is, then the person who is brought to the mix. Who is elected by the general populace will fill the remainder of the term. So they're two separate distinct things. What we're discussing tonight is the caretaker position, which is between now and ostensibly November twentieth, twenty first, depending on how the the secretaries of state, I guess, certify the election. Is that clear as mud? Okay, thank you. Please continue.
And that you are allowed to have an executive session before you make a final decision to appoint and you're allowed to discuss an executive session. The candidate's qualifications. That's all you can talk about. What I've seen that makes it a little bit easier on the people in executive session is if you all go around and each have an opportunity to talk about one candidate and then you go around and talk about a second candidate. So that all you're talking about is their qualifications. You're not comparing them to each other. Or maybe one of you talks about, maybe you interview six candidates is all. Talks about all six. Someone else talks about all six. That can cause a little bit of comparison, but I'm sure we we'll be able to work it out in an executive session the way you guys feel you'll be able to do it best to only talk about qualifications. And then you can come out of that and make motions and vote or discussion.
Hey, does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Let's talk about the governance manual and about specific procedures.
So this this section of the gov manual five point seven was drafted for the first time when council had to use it. And so it was drafted and and used right away and mayor, I I think you'd probably agree it worked well.
It worked.
We it covered all the bases.
Yeah.
So. So you're here tonight asking the mayor. I believe you will ask the mayor to direct staff to begin the administrative process and the city clerk has the yeoman's task in most of this. They will be putting out the advertisements and making sure everything has the right dates in it. And getting you the completed applications. So Mayor Matt McLean is on on task this time. Then you're then there's an interview process in your section C of that gov manual, section five point seven. And you're going to, if you receive more than six applications, you can reduce it down to six applications. But I think the way is this is written, if you get six, you need to interview all six people. Not sure why that was decision was made, but at least six, giving those people opportunity. And then prior to the interviews, you're gonna each come up with one interview question if you want. I believe that you've already done that and the order of being interviewed is going to be random. Again, Matt is going to choose who gets or who gets interviewed when. And then there's a time limit on each of the interviews of thirty minutes. And you can see in that section, it gives you an outline of the timing of each part of the interview. And then it talks, you can go into the executive session. And then everything else is open to the public and we'll see your discussions and your voting.
So colleagues, just on point, the there's a little bit of confusion about, not confusion, but the governance manual is a little bit incongruous, shall we say, with the RCWs about the executive session. So the point is that Kim will give guardrails, as she has done, about what you can talk about, what you cannot talk about to ensure that there isn't any violation of the OPMA. So, does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Questions about the governance manual? I think it's worked very well. Yes, Councilmember Goldman, I apologize.
Just a few logistical questions. Section B one refers to our official newspaper. Would that be the Seattle Times? And then presumably also like the Shoreline Area News and.
The Shoreline Area News usually picks up our news flashes, so it would automatically go there.
Okay, and then B three talks about how applications will be at the at City Hall, at the library. Just making sure it'll also be available online, so people can download it and send it electronically.
Yep.
Okay.
Clerk McLean, did you have anything else to add?
No, not really.
Twenty-four seven, I know. Colleagues, please ask Matt questions because this is the time to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely refer to him.
All right, I think this is the right time to broach the schedule then. So if all my council members could, fellow council members could bring their calendars out. All right, so Clerk McLean, I'm going to run a potential scenario by you here. So if tonight we act on this motion to ask the administration to start the search process, that gives us two weeks for the application period, which takes us to Memorial Day, May twenty sixth. I presume then on May twenty seventh, we'd all have access somehow to all the applications. That is, say, all the council members?
Yes. Yes, we could do that. It would have to be posted, would be posted for two weeks. So if you wanted to close it on the twenty-sixth, yes, that would be possible.
Okay. And thank you for that. And going further than graciously, Budget and Finance Chair Lebo has basically said that after the Budget and Finance meeting on May twenty ninth, we could schedule a special meeting to talk about the interviews. Or sorry, talk about the applicants. And at that time, Attorney Pratt, would that be at the time to do the executive session?
So on the twenty ninth, you'd be considering doing the interviews?
Not necessarily. I I'm I'm kind of hazy on the timeline myself, which is why I'm asking a clarifying question. Would it be an appropriate time to hold the executive session or would it be more appropriate for you to hold the interviews?
I would hold the interviews and then do your executive session.
Gotcha. All right, so council members, if you have and Councilmember Lebo, if you can confirm with me, you thought that the Budget and Finance meeting would last about an hour?
Actually, I haven't seen the agenda, but I don't think there's going to be much on the agenda this month.
Okay.
So it wouldn't last more than an hour.
Okay, so let's say that we start our special meeting immediately after the Budget and Finance meeting, so that we'll put it at seven, I think.
I think that would be reasonable.
Okay, consider Budget and Finance as a work session. It it.
Well.
Not a work session, but.
I think I think an hour would be fine for the Budget and Finance and so to start a special session at seven would be fine.
All right, wonderful. Thank you for that. All right, so well then council members have a special meeting on, to be clear, Thursday, May twenty ninth at seven PM for the purpose of scheduling or for interviews. So there's a potential, as Attorney Pratt said, that there could be up to six interviews. If there are fewer applicants, we're not required to interview six people, of course. So the my experience has been that it's hard to interview six people in a row, especially a half an hour interview and still retain it. Is there any requirement we have to do them all the same night?
Can I hop in real quick? I I think logistically, the twenty ninth is going to be very difficult to begin your interviews. Because Matt, so it's a holiday when it's going to close. The twenty-seventh would be when the clerk knows everybody and then would, I guess we could put the interviews would occur on the twenty ninth. I just wonder about the logistics of getting everybody here on that evening. As I speak, I'm figuring out maybe what you were thinking about having the application identified that night. So I just want to clarify that.
Council also has to vote on who to interview.
So.
Yeah, I was going to point that out.
Okay.
I would just offer that it closed not on a holiday, but to close on the following workday, just as a normal practice. And I think the other point is that we need to decide who to vote on.
Sure. Would that be appropriate to do on the twenty ninth, council? Would two days be enough, essentially a little less than two days be enough to be able to, for you and your mind to be able to decide this?
To decide on who to interview?
Who to interview.
I I think that would be possible.
Well.
But not do the interview, but to decide on, yes.
Councilmember Lebo.
It's just going to be challenging that if the materials come in on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, essentially you get one day. Or you read it while you're at work.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, yeah, and John, absolutely, that that is top of mind. What I was thinking too was a little bit of challenge here is that June is going to be a very essential period of deliberations by this council on middle housing and other issues. And having somebody seated as soon as possible is essential, but at the same time, you have to have the time that you need to do that. So. Time constraints aside. About, I think probably the better thing to do is to to your point, John, try to figure out maybe have it from a scheduling standpoint. Yeah, so it really kind of depends on what you want the twenty ninth to be. Because the twenty ninth is going to be too close.
Right, here's the, here's the reason, understanding the mayor's comments. For instance, June twenty-sixth, our council meeting that Thursday night is probably going to be heavy into the middle housing. That is literally the last time or the last point where we can touch it. So that leaves the June twelfth meeting, the regular business meeting to appoint the new council member. And so working backwards from that, you know, we, I now have counted at least three meetings that we need. One for voting on which people's interview, one doing the interviews, assuming we do them all in one go. And then, of course, voting to which which candidate is going to fill the seat. Go ahead.
Knowing that we have enough time ahead to realize that we're going to have a short turnaround between the applications arriving Tuesday and making the narrowing it down to six on Thursday. I think that's okay. I think we can do that just because we're prepared ahead of time. I would suggest perhaps we look at a special meeting Thursday, the fifth.
Yes.
Just for this purpose and then that doesn't eat into our work that we need to do at the other two meetings.
Okay.
What do you think about that?
That sounds like a great idea to me.
Please go right ahead.
A question and a comment. The question is, if we only have six or fewer people who apply, does that mean we would cancel the May twenty ninth special meeting? Because we don't, if only four people applied, we don't have to vote on which people to interview.
That's a good question, Councilmember. Here's the other thing I just want to throw out for your, as a data point. There's a possibility you may need additional special meetings in June to get through middle housing and the other requirements of the comp plan. So having said that, I think probably the best course of action would be initially to say we need, we're going to need four meetings in June. Plus the committee of the whole. And figure out what dates work for you for that. And then as things progress, because the planning commission is going to be handing this over to you and we don't have that yet, because this is an emergent kind of situation. I think you need to have your options open, so people are not caught flat footed about the timing. Is that a fair assessment, Deputy Mayor?
Okay, that is a fair assessment. Okay, so let's let's get back to our calendars then. So. Let's see.
You can always cancel the meetings.
Right, Councilmember Riddle. The fifth, the fifth is pretty much we must have.
I think so. And I think to address Councilmember Goldman's comment, since that's special meeting will be after Budget and Finance. I think if we end up with less than than seven applicants, I think it can be a kind of just a quick approval process. I think I would like council to officially say, yes, we're going to interview these folks.
Right.
And that could be like the extent of that special meeting after the budget and finance and that can probably be done for Zoom for those that aren't on budget and finance.
And then the comment I would offer, I would like us to, possible to spread the interviews over two evenings. Partly because I don't think anyone should be disqualified in the event that they have a conflict with the one interview night. And partly because I think three hours interviews in a row is a lot and I worry that by the time we're at time slot six, are we going to be operating at peak capacity?
Right.
So offering two interview nights, I think, would be would be mutually beneficial.
So assuming that we approve the candidates or the six to interview, up to six to interview on the twenty ninth, that leaves Monday, June second and Thursday, June fifth.
Or or do we just do a Wednesday? Because if someone has a Thursday conflict, they may have another Thursday conflict before they can clear their schedule if they were to be appointed. Do we want to try a Wednesday, Thursday, fourth, fifth and just get them, get them done? It's unusual for us, but.
Okay, so.
Very unusual.
It's an unusual night for us to meet, so I want everybody to check their calendars. So June fourth, then. It's the tree board meeting.
Also going to point that.
Yeah, Mondays, Mondays and Thursdays are better from the standpoint of city staff and everything else. John.
My preference would be fourth and fifth. Prefer not to do a Monday, but.
Okay. So what if you did that? May twenty ninth. Preliminary. June fifth. We also have June twelfth, regular schedule, which you'll have to be doing middle housing then. Potentially June fifth, you'll have to be doing middle housing, depending on how the planning commission falls in terms of completing their work. You have a committee of the whole on June twenty-third. And then you have a meeting on June twenty-sixth. Without Director Hoffman here, I won't know whether that's going to be enough time for middle housing. But I would say, I would offer that I think four meetings for middle housing should be, should be adequate unless we hear otherwise. And then tag teaming or adding into the mix the evaluation, assessment and decision on a future colleague for the council.
All right, so if I can summarize, so go ahead.
So two comments. We do have a budget and finance on Thursday, the nineteenth, that maybe we could also adopt the second half.
That's actually a holiday.
Oh, is that? We don't get that at all.
It's actually rescheduled to the twenty-sixth.
Oh, oh, that doesn't work.
Oh, dear, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, don't we have a regular council meeting on the twenty?
I would think we have a work session before that twenty-sixth meeting, don't?
Is it a budget and finance instead of a work session? Is that what we're doing? Okay.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so scrap that. But do we also have climate comprehensive plan to go over and approve before July first?
It's part of middle housing and the climate.
I don't think that needs to be approved until December thirty-first.
Yeah, okay. It's just.
Oh, it's the deadline is in the year for the climate.
Right.
Portion of the comp plan.
Okay.
It's the.
I thought it was.
Utilization of the funds from the ground that has to be extended.
Thank you. There was something happening.
I think CPAD also stops meeting at that point, so, yeah.
Okay.
Climate Policy Advisory Team.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for helping me.
All right, so, okay, so to summarize then, so the twenty ninth to choose the interviewees. June fourth and fifth for the interviews, because we want to give people a choice, okay? It may turn out that they can all do it on the fifth, and if there are fewer than three, I would recommend that we cancel the fourth, if that's the case. June twelfth to make the decision during our regular business meeting. So is that, so when do we schedule the executive session then?
June twelfth.
June twelfth, got it.
Or would it be, we could do it the end of the the fifth.
Okay.
Which I think would be fresh in our mind, whether we have one or two days, let's let's do
Right.
a potential executive session. At the end of the vote.
All right.
How are you feeling about this, Clerk McLean?
It's it's at the pleasure of the council, so if you want to hold an executive session on the fifth, we can do that.
Right. But the the concern that I have is that will staff be okay with the Wednesday, the fourth meeting? Because as has been pointed out, there are other city things going on.
That does conflict with a tree board meeting, so we'll have some logistical issues. We'll have to sort out with that.
Okay, but they're they're doable, sort outs.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, I don't want to impose undue burden on anything, so, yeah, okay. All right, so is everybody clear on the schedule then?
Okay. I would just offer to Deputy Mayor, if I may, that if you have fewer applicants or things progress apace, that you accelerate the timeline as fast as you can, just with with consideration of the community. But we got to get, we got, June is there's a lot of things that have to be completed, so.
Is there a reason that if things don't go smoothly, we can't do a selection at the end of Thursday after the executive session? If if there is obvious agreement?
We'd have to post it. I think we do have to announce that that there's a potential vote for the new council member, right?
I would, I would suggest posting it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The thing I'm thinking of is then we don't want to drag them all back on Thursday for our vote, for one of them to stay, you know.
Deputy Pratt, you're looking thoughtful.
I just want to make sure these are, these are, if these are going to be special meetings, we want to make sure we give you all the opportunities you can. And so if you're, if you want to possibly take final action in a special meeting.
Put it on each. Put it on.
You can always punt it. Yeah.
Okay.
You can add it.
Okay, that sounds good.
That would be my preference is that we have that option on June fifth.
Okay.
To go to a special session and then come back to make a vote.
Councilmember, good. Okay with you?
I'm okay.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Colleagues, are we all aligned here on on schedule and?
And to also be clear, all these special meetings start at six, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, except for the one on the twenty-ninth, obviously, yeah.
Unless the council wants a different time, then.
Okay.
Well, it started at three, I'm fine.
You will find.
Mr. McLean, do you have everything you need?
I think so, yes.
Okay, this is also time for staff to ask questions of council.
And if you're going to make a choice on the fifth, then they would get sworn in on the sixth.
Okay. This is Friday.
Okay.
Or it could.
Right.
Do it afterwards, but.
Phil, you're looking thoughtful too.
You're probably going there, but we just need the official direction from council.
Wait, I was going to go there next. Thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion for the council to request that the administration to start the formal process for for advertising and et cetera, et cetera. You know what I'm talking about.
Yes, I moved that the council authorized the mayor to direct the administration to begin the processes needed to fill the vacant city council position per the city's governance manual and RCWs.
Second.
We moved the second. Are there any questions or comments? Are there none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, passes unanimously. Thank you, council. And with that, where are we?
I think we're on B.
Where are we? Yes. Application process and setting deadlines. So as a reminder, the deadlines, well, go ahead and you can
Okay.
you know what the deadlines are.
Right. So if.
Please, Deputy Referee Tony.
Since we've authorized the mayor to do this now and the administration to do this, the deadlines should be May I think under
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Lebo, you said the Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, right? Yeah, okay. Do we have a time on that? The end of business?
End of day, five, five PM.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, and then I think the rest of this is basically making sure that we have the questions we want. So I think Clerk, Clerk McLean has basically distributed to all of you one sheet that says oral interview questions. And then the potential application. And the other one's a potential application. Unfortunately, the red line didn't come through in the in the photocopy, but they're not major changes. In line three, for instance, we wanted to emphasize that the role is for a term of approximately six months. So that people wouldn't be misled that it was the full two and a half years or anything like that. I know it says it in the next line, literally. The compensation, and I wanted to confirm with the City Administrator Hill, eight hundred a month or is it seven hundred a month still?
I think it is eight hundred a month.
Eight hundred, yeah, it was increased last year.
All right. Thank you. Okay, and then down at the, towards the bottom of application instructions and procedures, there's basically a line that a Councilmember Riddle suggested, which is that your address, phone and email information will be kept private. That's a reasonable thing, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's not needed to be made public for any reason, I assume. Okay, yeah.
You don't have to make public, but I would need to check to see if we could withhold it.
Okay.
I don't think you can. I don't think you can. Yeah, I'm almost certain of that.
Okay, well, if if it if it goes against any kind of state requirements, uh we can certainly omit that line, so yeah.
Okay. Would they, but they would know if it is optional, they do put it that it could be subject to public disclosure?
Thank you.
Right.
It's Brad.
Yeah, in in fact, the bullet point above it says that they have to file with the P D C, so.
Yeah, I'm just thinking uh uh I don't want that to be something that would concern an applicant. If they didn't make it, then to have that information out there. But again, anyone could um do a public disclosure request, but at least it's not initially being published. I, that's kind of the only thing I was wondering. In other words, redacted and.
Right, I I'm not sure how that works.
But yeah, he could give us some advice.
It's up. Yeah. It's, I think it's disclosable, unfortunately, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because the only, you know, I just think about when when I don't know if I can talk about that, but anyways. Sometimes you can like use a P O box in place of your address and we're asking for the address, so I just trying to make sure.
Right. Would it be analogous to when we are voting on members for the planning commission or the tree board? Where their applications are in the council packet, but some of their contact information is redacted?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so. But I mean, they're still open to public disclosure.
Right.
Yeah, they could, someone could request it.
I guess that's what I was kind of basing my thought on, is that's how we do it for the other applications.
Okay, so I I I think we've come to an agreement that we'll trade it like like any applicant for a commission then. So it's still subject to disclosure, but we don't have to, you know, put it out there to start.
Okay.
Okay.
So maybe we want to reword that a hair.
Yeah, so I'll I'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, the uh, the only other change is on the other side of the page, uh a- at the end of about the Lake Forest Park City Council. Uh, Councilmember Riddle suggested that we put that council members are expected to prepare for meetings by reading the council packet ahead of the meeting. I think that's a really good addition.
Calling city concerns.
Didn't understand that.
Oh, literally just read the packet before the meeting.
Your homework.
Your homework, got it, okay.
Yeah.
You're expected to really.
Yeah.
Know the material and participate, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Fair enough, everybody.
And so Clerk McLean, is there enough information for you to fill in the next steps, all the dates and date times and things like that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Alright, so is everybody okay with the application uh? Um, there's one part that we're going to revisit, which is literally the uh seven questions that are under council member application on the second page of the application. Um, because on the other sheet that says oral interview questions, I've listed those written questions below. And since we all have the opportunity to answer one question, if you want to basically pull one from the written questions, in other words, get rid of it from the written questions and then ask it an open public forum, that's also an a- a- appropriate thing. I've listed a mine and uh Councilmember Goldman and Riddle's questions, they submitted them. So if you have one that you want to submit, go ahead and mention it now.
Colleagues, any additional questions for the mix?
Um, do we have to do it this evening or can we just do it ahead of the uh interviews?
So this is a, this is kind of the interesting question, so um Clerk Clerk McLean, in this process, when do the applicants get the uh inter- the oral interview questions?
Uh, that's actually up to the council. We could put it as part of the application process, or we could send it out after, before the meeting.
Right, so we need to come to a consensus on that, yeah.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
Um, are we intending to publish the uh oral questions ahead of the uh the interview or ask the questions based upon? I suppose if you're interviewing the second day, you'd know the questions.
Right. So, you know, generally, um, most interviews I've been to, this is my personal experience, um, is that I get the questions anywhere from a day to an hour ahead of time. And it works better for everybody involved because you're not trying to formulate a question on the uh answer to a question on the fly, you're more thoughtful about it. But I can see basically, you know, there's room for discussion here, so what do, go ahead, Councilmember.
Why would you not provide a list of the questions with the application?
Per for the Governance Manual, we we are to have our predetermined set of questions will be um presented to the applicants, it sounds like, and then under something, something C, second page, third C. After the predetermined questions, council members may ask and receive answer to miscellaneous questions. So that feels like those are like the, very specific to something they said and like getting more information or whatnot, and those don't necessarily in my interpretation, even like the same oral question for every candidate, it's it's asking them to flesh out an answer or something. So if it's going to be the same questions for every applicant, just put them in as written questions, I guess.
You 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 mean in on the application form itself?
Yeah, yeah, I guess if we're going to ask every, and then like you said, then they have time to think it through um and provide.
So we wouldn't, so so there would be a separate set of written questions that are on the application form, things like your uh um you know, your occupational background, beginning with your current occupation. That might be kind of a dry question to ask in open public forum, but on the other hand, some of these other questions might be appropriate for actually orally asking.
Yeah.
So we would.
When we, when we interview other uh candidates for, they usually have everything filled out and sometimes we ask them questions based off of something we may see in their resume or their application. Sometimes we ask them questions based off of something they said when they, you know, introduced themselves. I imagine that that the oral will be that flexible. So if we decide we want to ask them all the same question, suppose we put on the application, these will be oral questions asked of you, but I don't see why they shouldn't just write it down, then we can read it ahead of time.
There.
I I would just say, just for people that are going to watch or watching this online or for the edification of people who watch it later, because this is uncharted territory. Uh Deputy Mayor, Ferthony has the floor, he is the chair, chairing this right now, this part of the meeting. Let's try to get back a little bit to Robert's rules, if you could, please.
Fair enough.
Out of consideration of your colleagues, make sure everybody has equal airtime.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you for the reminder, Mayor, yeah. Um, and uh, so uh Councilmember Lebo, just because uh you you had posed the question. I think that uh i- if we're going to go with the idea that on the application will be the oral questions, we do need to have them pretty much um tonight. So if uh, I think um Clerk Clerk McLean, if I can ask you a question, um, when are you intending on making the application available tomorrow?
As soon as possible.
Okay. Alright, so I'm willing to work through the night to basically take people's questions, so if you, oh, sorry.
Um, so it's my thinking, I'm echoing something that Councilmember Lebo said. If we're doing interviews on Wednesday and Thursday, the Thursday people are going to hear the questions on Wednesday, so that isn't really equal. So I do think we should post the oral questions in advance. What I'm thinking is, let's finalize the written questions tonight. And then we can spend some more time on the oral questions. And then we'll have our deliberation on Thursday, May twenty ninth, where we choose who we're going to interview. And then possibly Friday, May thirtieth, uh Clerk McLean could email out the oral questions to those six interviewees. So that would give us potentially until the twenty ninth to finalize the questions that we're going to ask orally.
You've served on a hiring committee, haven't you, before? Alright, fair enough, that's that's that's, I think that's a great solution. I think that's a great solution.
So then I think we would want to add um select oral questions to the agenda of the special meeting, so we can in fact do that.
Absolutely, thank you for that. Alright, this is why we're a body here, because everybody has a piece to add, which is wonderful, thank you, okay. Alright, so um I guess then the only thing we have to decide tonight then is um the written questions, those seven questions that are on either this sheet or on the application itself. Um, do you see pulling any of those so that you want to just ask the applicant in person?
I have a question.
Councilmember Good?
Is there anything that would preclude someone from applying for the position?
Um, if they're not a resident of Lake Forest Park.
That's the only thing.
One year, I think, it's the same.
Yes, for one year, yeah.
Same as a regular candidate.
Right, yeah, same as a regular candidate, yeah.
Any other questions?
That's what we ask.
Okay, so I'm just going to go around the horn then and basically find out from each person if there's something they want to pull to ask themselves, so starting over with Councilmember Good, are there any questions you want to ask them directly?
I think these questions are straight and to the point.
Okay, so um if you will send me a question that you want to ask orally, um sometime between now and, let's say, uh Memorial Day, then I'll make sure it's in the list that we provide to Clerk Clerk McLean. Councilmember Lebo?
I'm good, I'm good with the questions that are posed on the application.
Okay, great. And so you'll send me a question for the oral interview, same deadline, thank you. Alright, so Councilmember Riddle, are you okay with your question that you've posed?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And the and the written questions, I I guess I should ask that first.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, Councilmember uh Goldman?
Yes, um, with my experience as a teacher who gives exams, the only thing I would add is maybe a word or a sentence limit to some of these. Um, otherwise, some people may write multiple pages on some of these questions.
That is an excellent point.
Uh, the second question, what would that, what would that limit be?
Right.
I hadn't thought that far ahead. Uh, I I think it, I think it's mainly for questions five and seven. Those seem to be the most open-ended of the written questions.
Yeah.
I would say you keep it to a couple paragraphs for each.
Right.
Two paragraphs.
Yep.
Uh, you might want to consider, just like they do for the voters pamphlet, if I might add it, they just put in a word limit. And so that might be the easiest ways, just to describe a word limit.
Okay.
Question.
So a couple paragraphs being about a hundred words then?
Oh, yeah, I was thinking in the neighborhood of like three hundred words.
Okay.
But I'd be open to any such, I'd be open to suggestion.
Councilmember Riddle?
I think kind of both, because some people may be handwriting it, and it's kind of awkward to.
That's fair.
Do your, count your words, and then now you've already written it, but I think two paragraphs, approximately three hundred words, that gives them a sense of what there should be providing.
Alright, I will make a note of that. Councilmember uh Goldman, is that reasonable to you?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Okay, um, I've got my question that I want to ask orally, so um I'm also good with the seven questions. Um, I will reach out to Councilmember uh Saunders and make sure that e- everything's okay with. Alright, um, so any other questions that people have about the process, this application?
Deputy Mayor, I'm, I just want to clarify, the written questions that are on the application are the ones that are going in the application, not the questions that you. Those are the oral question.
Right. Right, so what I'm going to do then, uh my my plan is to incorporate the comments about the written questions that we just heard uh in- into the application, send you a clear, clean copy tonight.
Okay.
And then we can move from there, so thanks very much for your indulgence. Alright, so I'm going to turn the meeting back over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Uh, just one small point, um, with regard to your background information, what does it say? List your educational background or attach a resume? Um, I would just uh or how do you want to address that with with regard to a word limit?
I mean, I guess when you say attach resume, uh yeah, I'm I'm not expecting somebody's C V necessarily, right, with all their publications, but if that happens, is that a big problem?
How about we just strike it or attach a resume?
Okay, just list your educational background in that case?
Yeah, so where wherever it says or attach a resume, just delete it. And that would be questions one, two and three.
Is that acceptable to the council? Questions one, two and three to strike or attach resume?
In that case, we would just need to delete the bullet point on the front that says you may attach a resume in lieu of answering questions one, two, three.
Nice catch.
You might get a C V otherwise.
Right. Fair enough. Okay, so I'll make that change as well. So, uh before we leave this topic, anybody else have a change they want to suggest? Okay, now, actually back to you.
Oh, it's all, it's all fine.
I do, just. To to be delivered in person, do you want to put the um hours and any days that the city is closed during the application period?
Yeah.
So they know they can't come down on that Monday and stuff like that?
Yeah, I can put the hours down, yeah.
Just add it under the address and stuff, okay, appreciate that.
Well, thank you, colleagues.
I'm sorry, I just saw this, uh but here on uh there is a question number eight where it says, please provide contact information for two references not related to you, so that means that 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 implies that we're going to be in that, uh we're going to be talking to references? Or would we strike that question?
That's a really good question. Um, well, this is uncharted water, so we don't necessarily know. Um, those of you who were here in the last time that we had to appoint to a vacancy, were the references checked?
Oh, boy. Uh, I would, yes, I believe so.
Okay.
I believe so. I know, well, I mean, to be full disclosure, the last person that went through this process was Councilmember Riddle. So, um, and that was nine years ago. Yeah. Yeah, and um yeah, I'm pretty sure the references were checked.
And second question to along with that, who will be checking the references?
I believe that would be the clerk's office.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, and that goes along with the letters of recommendation as well, right, number nine, so yeah, on the back of the, yeah, yeah.
No, okay, colleagues, any other questions? It's really.
Uh, just uh one of timing, so if we have an option to to um vote on a candidate following the interviews, is the presumption that the reference check is done ahead of time? And that the purpose of the reference check is to just uh for educational and work experience, or is there any additional?
Uh, set the pleasure of the council, but um ideally, I would have the reference check done before the interviews, yes.
But the reference check, the purpose of beyond educational or um work experience, is there any other uh criteria for the reference check?
I would my recommendation would be, it would be similar to a letter of recommendation, so it would be based on their experience to recommend to to fill this position. Not necessarily a uh whatever their experience is.
Is is there something that you were looking for?
Well, it's just that um, you know, are you doing a reference check that says, you know, is this candidate a good person? Or is it a reference check to uh validate that their educational and their work experience aligns with what they put in their application? We have seen experience where candidates, even when elected, their references and um pardon me, their educational and work experience did not align with what they described to the voters. And it becomes more of a administrative function rather than it art, is this a good person kind of thing? Because that's subjective and probably best left to the council to ask or discern, rather than administrative function, which should be just sort of so validation.
So it sounds like you're making a recommendation that it be that first thing you said, which is just checking the educational and work experience? Alright, council?
That's why, that's the the reason why I ask if there was anything that would could preclude someone from serving on council.
Right.
I mean, because that goes into if, are they a good person?
Should we clarify to provide uh employment or uh volunteer references or something like that? Educational or employment references, so if they they are confused?
I think the city administrator is is um has a point.
Right.
Sorry, thank you for coming back to me, and I've kind of lost my train of thought, because I I went on with Councilmember Riddle. Um, and we'll speak with the H R director, I think you definitely just want to be checking their qualifications. To Councilmember Lebo's point, one thing that I thought of that could disqualify, it disqualifies you for employment, is if you lie on your technically your resume.
To Councilmember Lebo's point, one thing that I thought of that could disqualify, it disqualifies you for employment, is if you lie on your, technically, your resume, so that's another one. Um, but I think, yeah, to, to the point, yeah, we're, we're not here to discern whether they're a good person or not. That's your interview process, if it's an election, that's the electorate, you know, that's their decision if they're a good person or not, so we will just check technical right, side of it.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right, so I, I think we could clarify this for the public, if we just add the word professional, so contact information for two professional references, I think that would make it more clear that anyone who's applying, that we're looking to verify employment, that sort of thing, rather than get a testimonial about your moral fiber.
About there? Okay.
Right, right, colleagues, any other, any other questions for staff or concerns? Um, I for one appreciate, and I know you all do too, the very thoughtful deliberation that you're going through on this process, um, I was speaking your praises to Shoreline City staff and their mayor today saying how congenial you all are, and this illustrates the point, and I thank you for that very much, because it, it, um, it does not go unnoticed in this region that Shoreline, Lake Forest Park and Kenmore get along very well on, amongst the policymakers, so we do appreciate it, and it's my fervent hope that you'll find a very talented person to, um, fill a very big chair here, um, and that, that individual will also bring breadth of expertise that you all bring to the mix and the civility that you've all exhibited for many years, I really appreciate it, Deputy Mayor, Ferthani.
Yeah, thank you for those kind words, Mayor, and, uh, with this community, oh, no, no way, we're not gonna find somebody amazing for this position. I do want to extend my thanks to all the city staff, as well as Attorney Pratt, for basically the extra work they have to put in for this process, and, uh, this is the start of this long journey we're just about to make, and I wanted to express my appreciation ahead of time, because there's, there's gonna be a few more hours here, of course, so, thank you.
Yeah, and the last note I would just make is June is gonna be busy, be prepared to pivot in terms of timeframe, if, if it's necessary to get things dragged across the line, line relative to the comp plan particularly, so.
And may I suggest, if you have any plans, they can, there are times where you're not gonna be available, maybe get those to Deputy Mayor now, so he's just aware of where we might have scheduling issues. We've done that before and it's worked well.
One, one more note, uh, here, uh, wanted to ask if you're a registered voter, does it, does it mean anything if you are or you're not? Like if you're not a registered voter, does that preclude you from anything, or, or if it, if it, you know?
Yes.
Because if it does preclude you, then maybe you should say if you're not a registered voter, then they would be disqualified. I'm just bringing it up.
It's required.
It's required.
Okay, so.
It's a fundamental.
Then maybe that should be clarified.
In the, yeah.
That it's required that you're a registered voter, are you a registered?
Oh, it, it is, under who may apply, registers voters who have been residents of Lake Forest Park within one year, so. Yeah, so, somebody, somebody anticipated us, it's cool, it's cool.
Okay, any other questions, comments, thoughts? Uh, poetry, reading, anything, I'll take it, no, Phil's saying no, all right, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Yeah.